Hi there. Is the drierpary okay? Is that warm enough? Okay, how about the temperature of the room? Okay, let me know if I can do anything else to make you more comfortable? Would you mind if I just start by putting my hands on your shoulders? Okay, so... Let me just come right here. And right in here. How does this feel? Okay, if it's too much, just let me know. So this is the start of Rosen Method bodywork. I feel a lot of tension bringing the shoulders up right here in your body. Now, since this is your first session, I'll be a little more talkative and tell you a little bit more about it. But subsequent sessions are very quiet, at least on my part. My job is to be observational, to tell you what I feel. Good. About here. Yes, the shoulders feel more rounded than usual. And I'll just sit with this. Rosen Method bodywork. This was developed by a woman named Marion Rosen. She was born in 1914 in Germany, and she was of Jewish descent. And I'm going to move a little bit. Let's see. Right about here. Okay, so the breathing feels tight here. A little restricted. So Marion Rosen studied touch therapy. And she studied under someone whose husband was a physician who was adjacent to the newly developing psychotherapy. You may have heard of it. So he was adjacent to people like Carl Jung and Sigmund Freud. Hmm... Breathing's easing a little bit. And she worked with people that were receiving psychotherapy. Worked as a touch therapist for those people. And it was noticed that the people who went through the touch therapy did much better in psychotherapy. And then she left Germany. Obvious reasons. Wasn't safe for her. And she studied physical therapy in both Sweden and then the United States. And she worked in California for a long time. There is some tightness right here. Just sit with this. And it wasn't until the 1970s that someone approached her to to learn what she had with touch therapy back in Munich. She noticed that when working with people, oftentimes the patient would experience these emotional, I don't want to call it outburst, but they experienced a lot of emotions. And over time with experience, the things that she already knew, through time working with psychoanalysis patients and touch therapy, then she came up with this method that she could teach other people. Abdomen is less rigid. I liken Rosen Method to a mix of the elements of talk therapy and the therapeutic power of touch. It is cultivating a sense of safety, of non-judgment to address physical and emotional pain. Generally, physical would be muscle tension. And emotional pain can be really anything. It works a lot with the concept of kind of a psychosomatic symptom where emotions or an emotional trauma causes symptoms, generally pain in the body, oftentimes headaches. There is an emotional anatomy as well, we'll get into. But if the pain is structural, that's not so much what this deals with, it's more... For example, if you're a very anxious individual with a lot weighing on you, you might have a lot of neck and shoulder pain from the tension. And it can absolutely be addressed with this. It's only space for someone to see what comes up and just listening to that person, allowing them to exist, to be as they are, not allowing any sort of shame to permeate the space. We are who we are, yeah. Whether it is shameful or not. Shame generally defined by other people. Shame that we are taught. So by using touch and observation, for example, right here, I can feel the shoulders pulling forward. Just using a sort of gentle but matter-of-fact touch. It's not hesitant. It just is. It is supportive. It is allowing... So something that kind of goes hand-in-hand with this, with these concepts, because it is interesting that we do have talk therapy for the mind, for the head, and we often have physical therapy or manual therapies for the body, but rarely are the two integrated. Even though there is such a thing as the mind-body connection. Breathing is much deeper now. Right. So, something that goes a little hand-in-hand with that is that your brain is not your buddy. Your brain is your bodyguard. Its job isn't to make you happy, its job is to keep you alive. Sometimes... Sometimes, for example, in depression or anxiety, it feels like our brain is trying to sabotage us. That's doing these things on purpose. And it's not. What it's doing is interpreting information that for a very long time it had a clear plan of how to deal with it. Fight, flight, freeze, fawn. But those don't work as well in the modern world, do they? The neck seems to be looser now. So, response to stress, stressors that you know, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred years ago might have been similar, but they're not quite like we have now. You know, we don't have to worry about predators eating us, for example, which I suppose was not all the way true a few hundred years ago, but those people weren't worried about being stuck in traffic, for example, or being on social media. So your brain just responds to things the only way it knows how, with the information it's given, just it's a little bit of a different a different time, different applications. There's a saying that the body keeps score. That is also very apt for this. Because we often find, especially in the emotional anatomy, that we hold things that have happened to us that we've experienced. And we keep it on us, which the purpose is a survival tactic, but it is not a thriving tactic. It'll get us through, but it won't allow us to move on. I'm going to continue just observing what's going on. And if anything comes up for you, feel free to reply. Again, there is absolutely no judgment here. As far as divulging information, I am essentially the Catholic priest at confession. That stuff is going to the grave with me. And it's not for anyone else at all. Just you. Feel a lot of muscle tension right here around the hips here. Just feeling around. And listening to what the body has to say. As we've been working, your body has been able to become a little looser. You are lying more on the table here. More surface area is on the table. Some people with that feel a sense of heaviness, allowing their body to relax down and sink into the surface underneath. Breathing is deeper. Yes, let's see. Different areas that want to be heard and have something to say that need to be said. Right here on the chest. Muscles here feel a little less bunched up in the clavicle upper pectoral region. One side. Good. The other. I'm going to place my hands right here on the neck. Now, I've mentioned a little bit about emotional anatomy. This is the idea that certain places in the body hold certain certain messages, if you will. For example, here in the neck. There is a lot of tension here. The muscles feel more hard as opposed to pliable. And in terms of emotional anatomy, the neck is for repressed emotions. You're holding things back, not allowing them to surface. This is where it often shows up. And then down here at the shoulders. Where there's tension here, where there is pain here, it's often related to the responsibilities we feel, the obligations we have if we feel weighed down. We have a lot of expectations placed upon us. This is where we often feel that. Just feel around. See what's due. Tell us something. Just going to go underneath here. The lower back is expanding more with your breath. Inside here. Body is breathing more fully into the lower back. I can feel ribs expand more with the breath. Dihafrium is incredibly important. That is that big transverse muscle that pulls air in and pushes it back out. And we don't breathe correctly, we certainly don't feel very well, but we also can accidentally not think well either. You're restricting the breathing and only breathing shallowly in the upper part of the lungs. What's most important is in terms of the lungs, that you have oxygen to be able to run the legs and the arms. So if you're breathing really quickly and shallowly, you can still run, you can still get away if you need to, but that means that it sacrifices the oxygen that's coming up to the brain. When we breathe deeper into the chest, into the lungs, it allows us to get that fresh wave of oxygen that we need to the brain. Allows us to feel more calm, centered, grounded. Allows us to slow down time a little bit and really think things through. Sometimes it allows the world to feel a little less overwhelming as you can actually think about it a little bit. Feeling the chest expand more. And over to the arms. Down. Other side. Good. The arms themselves are pretty loose. Not holding. About up here. It's holding here. Let's come back to the shoulders here, so... The shoulders have sunk down. Under my touch, they are sinking down a little bit more. Coming back into place. What about here on the neck? Let's just let those work as they will. Something that sets apart Rosen Method from other bodywork modalities is there really isn't a lot of actual bodywork, if you will. We are not doing anything to you. We are allowing you to do whatever it is you need to do and just facilitating that. Patient guides the process. We are just the referees. Body overall is holding much less tension. Settle my hands on your legs here. We'll work here for a little bit. Just see what's going on. Just see what's going on. Here at the feet. Legs are not holding much tension. They seem to be rather loose. Relaxed. Just take a little bit off. Let her feel around. Most of the lingering tension seems to be in the neck, shoulders, and chest. One particular interesting spot in our emotional anatomy is the back of the heart. Where we feel betrayal, where we carry betrayals. I believe might have been when I was reading Marion Rosen's book. She recalled, or it was recalled, a story that was very similar to the myth of Achilles, which his mother bathed him in the river Styx to grant him invulnerability, except for his heel where she was holding him. And he died when an arrow hit his heel. The story's a little different in that invulnerability was granted except at the back of the heart. And the only two people who knew was the person's mother and their best friend. And their best friend stabbed them through the heart. In one place they were vulnerable. And that's where a lot of people can carry that sort of hurt. That tension. Body seems to relax more when I am at this upper part here. Seems to respond more to the touch there. Let's go down to the sides here. Top of the shoulders still remain a little tense. Just supporting. Just allowing. Let's go right down here. Good. Maybe right right here. Right around the neck. Now, Rosen Method works very well in conjunction with doc therapy. Whatever flavor you like, generally it's CBT. Because this just uncovers those areas that maybe you weren't thinking about. The the things that haunt you that you're not allowed to think about, whether it's by yourself or other people. And once you uncover those things, that's where you can address them with a trained professional to work that all out. This is just this is just the sort of emotional epiphany part. If something comes up that you need to explore more, you need to address further, then that's where I would send you if that is accessible. And if you want to keep working with this and keep working on what you feel might be holding you back, then we can go as long as you want, as long as it's helpful. Some people only need one session. Some people like multiple, some people go for years. It's just really, as long as you see benefit. But if you don't, then that's no problem at all. At least you know. Breathing is slow and deeper. Much deeper than when you came in. Something feels like it's unnodding. Down the arms. Checking in, making sure nothing's moved. Yeah? The legs. Hips here. This is a lot more open, this space. Making more contact with the surface underneath. The abdomen. Just want to feel across the diaphragm here. Pulling air in, pushing back out. Rise and fall of the abdomen. When we finish, that is where a lot of the quote-unquote "work" kind of starts. In that you might have experienced things you haven't before. Things might have come up. And then you get to choose what you want to do with that. If that's something you want to address, if that's something that is helpful for you, something you still need. Where you might choose, yeah? It takes some time to just digest it as well. There's no right answer. It's whatever works for you. Whatever best serves you, not anyone else, just you. Let's check in with the neck and the shoulders here. Definitely a lot less rigid than when we started. There is some opening here. There is some space being created here. Much more open here. Much softer in this area. I think we will conclude our session here. I will leave you to let you get dressed and you can stay for a bit if you need to. Gather your bearings a bit, make sure that you get up slowly. Just to make sure you don't fall over anything. We did something that can be very relaxing. It gets a little hard to transition to going back to the real world. So take it slow. Take it mindful. And this is something that worked for you. Feel free to make another appointment. And if it wasn't for you, that is more than okay. I'd like to thank you so much for coming here for this Rosen Method bodywork session. I hope you have a whale of a day and a good rest of your night. Thank you.